Benefits is a five percent increase, employee taxes six percent increase. Position wise, we've had some changes due to some retirements, some hirings. So everyone FTEs, we are still at fifty-five, we're actually a little less at point two-three, but still at fifty-five. As you see, benefits are thirty-one point eight percent of wages. Also, on raises for next year, we did plan for a total of ten percent, that's eight percent cola two percent merit, based off the surrounding cities. The average of the surrounding cities is nine, but when I say eight percent cola two percent merit, obviously not everyone will get two percent merit, to be honest, most won't. Because we break it up, so it's one percent, one point two-five, one point five, one point seven-five, to get the idea. So not me that will get two percent. But of course, we have to budget for two percent in case they do.
Sure.
So that depends on evaluation scores. So again, eight percent cola, two percent merit.
Okay, so I don't know if there are any other questions. My question related to the number of FTEs in the budget, because there's so much movement in each of the individual budget categories with people coming in and people going out, it was difficult for me to understand how many employees we had and whether there had been a change in the number of full-time employees. It appears there has not been a change.
Actually, a little less.
What's that?
Actually, just a little bit less.
A little bit less, which is good. So it answered my questions, I don't know if any council has any further question on this or not.
Mr. Vice Mayor? Yeah, when is it called a quid pro quo?
July, yes, sir.
And does that eight percent track that twelve-month period from July went back to July? Inflation's gone up and down and around.
Yes, sir.
Does that eight percent track the actual inflation for that twelve-month period prior to that increase?
We won't know that. There'll be an inflation report that's put out at the end of June that will compare twelve months ending in June, which I'm assuming we won't know that today.
Which was probably gonna be less than, it's been going down a little bit, so I just wondered where the eight percent number's coming from.
We compared with other cities to see where who else is looking at, and the average of the cities was at nine, but now that's between merit and call it together, sir.
We had, it would probably make sense, you know, we're in the process, we're not at the point where this is a done deal in terms of the numbers. Would make sense to get what the twelve-month average, and what is the twelve-month inflation at the end of April, which is just coming up, and then we can at least have them give us an indication. I'm sure it's a little bit less than eight, just because it started out, it started out around nine and a half, and now I think that it's close.
Wasn't it eight percent last year?
Didn't one last year was eight and two?
Yeah.
We didn't see the eight and two last year.
Yeah, see what that number is, and I don't know that we necessarily want to change the ten percent, but it might be that the cola part might go down to seven.
Absolutely.
And then the merit part go up to three. I would rather, I'd prefer that as opposed to more of an cola and less a merit.
That would work a little.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on, the other thing, and really the main reason to have this meeting, is to give staff direction on bond options. There have been a lot of work done since the last meeting, we should thank Paige for all the hours that she put in building a variety of spreadsheets. I had the pleasure of going through them with her. There were dozens of them. And I had to bite my tongue, because I tried to tell her she still needed to do something else, but then after I took the time to look through all twelve, I decided that she had done enough. So, the one that I do favor, and I discussed this with the vice mayor, is instead of borrowing twenty-three million dollars and adding significant debt to the city, and make but at the same time making staff's job very easy, because they would not have to manage through any kind of crisis, because they'd have all this borrowed cash to deal with. Instead of that, we can live quite nicely if we borrow eleven point five million. And it will allow us, unless we have an incredibly bad, you know, almost depression, our revenues will support that without us having to dramatically impact our CIP, ongoing CIP programs. If we get a recession that ends up being very serious, and our economy generally goes down significantly, then the eleven point five million will put us in a position where we have to manage through the crisis, but we can manage through it, because we have discretionary items in per spreadsheet that we can postpone. Easiest example of it is we've got five million, five million dollars on GMP six, seven, and eight for the square, that could be pushed out if we needed to push it out, so that we didn't end up getting into the two areas of reserves that we have, as a council, decided that we really do not want to spend, we need to keep that money in the bank. So, the question that's left is whether it becomes more manageable if we get a bad recession, if we have a longer amortization for these bonds. If we go to ten years, I can't see what's on the screen.
Hey, can we see the interest percentage of the sheet? That you, just real briefly, the ten, twenty, thirty-year interest rates, if I may, Mayor?
Sure.
Yes. That's one, can we slide that over so Councilman Claire's face isn't on the interest on the debt?
It basically goes from two point eight percent to three point eight percent to four point three percent.
Can you move the same as we're starting?
There we go, yeah. So, there we go.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, so the difference between the twenty and thirty is not huge, the big interest savings is between the ten and the twenty, there's a one percent on eleven million, it's a hundred and ten thousand a year in the first year. You and I had talked, I don't know if we ever reached a consensus into whether ten years or twenty years.
I think the easiest, so council can understand the difference, pull up the cash projections based on the eleven point five and ten, twenty, and thirty-year amortizations, in the worst-case Okay, so here's a ten-year term, if you go to the bottom of this sheet, what happens, okay, so stop right there. We have, in this budget, we have put in the nine million that basically is represented by GMP five, and then eleven million and four million, which is GMP six, seven till the finish. We have then three millions for public works, which we believe that we can do better than that in terms of the cost, but we've got a full three million dollars in there. And then for CIP, we have two point five million, which is stuff that we've already got planned in and programmed, and things that we really need to do. But we've taken out all significant CIP after that, so it's a hundred dollars a year, which doesn't really do much for any kind of major project. And with that, if we have the worst-case scenario in ten years, we end up at the end of this, is that the fifth year? It is, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so is that three point?
About three point three.
Negative.
Oh, this, yeah, this is three point seven.
So we've actually reduced, we have eaten into our stabilization fund that we had set at thirty-five percent. That stabilization fund is supposed to be there in part to make sure that we always have enough cash to pay our bond payments, because we've got bond payments already that are out there for the fifteen million dollar bond. And so what we did when we set these reserve rates is, the fifteen percent is an accepted number for minimum reserve for nonprofit kind of organizations based on their operating revenues, so that it's the absolute minimum that would be financially responsible for a city that's set, is this fifteen percent. We thought that that's way too low for us when we take into account the fact that we just issued the fifteen million dollars in bonds. And so the thirty-five percent was supposed to come in to cover those sorts of ongoing expenditures that we really cannot afford not to make, which in this case, it would be doing that, except that we're using it up. So if we went out to the sixth year in this scenario, we would have used all of it up, and probably it would be getting into fifteen percent, which would be very bad. We can, if we can manage to that problem by changing the spending on that fifteen million dollars except for GMP six and seven and eight, obviously if we just moved, if we moved ten million of the fifteen million out, then it would eliminate that negative use of our stabilization fund. So it is something that we can manage to. We can also reduce that three million dollars, and we can do it more substantially than what we've even discussed as far as what we can build. We need to do something with Public Works Yard, it is a disgrace, and we should not have employees trying to do their jobs in that facility. It's not, it is not the way our employees should be treated, and we say something about ourselves when we let it go on. But we can do something to improve that at a lot less than three million dollars. And that would be, so that would be managing this risk or managing this situation, if we get into an economic situation that we become concerned that our revenues are going to be impacted enough to have this kind of an impact, then we have to take, our staff has to take, and figure out what kind of steps are we going to take to reduce expenditures that are not absolutely necessary, including expenditures on the operation of the city, which also there may be some expenditures in the city which can be reviewed and reduced. When we went through this before, we did things like freezing the number of employees. So as you have turnover, and we have turnover, you see the amount of turnover, it's normal to have turnover. If we freeze them, employees, we're naturally going to reduce our headcount, and we're going to reduce what we spend on employee functions. It's gonna be harder for him to manage to it, he's gonna have to move people around and deal with it, but there are things like that, that if we get into a really difficult situation, and we have to do this, then we have ways that we can deal with it. Again, that's, this is using a ten million, it's eleven point five million ten-year amortization, so we could do this. If you go to twenty, then what happens is a lot of that negative.
I thought this one was the worst-case scenario.
It's worst-case scenario, but with ten, it's eleven point five million a bond, but with a ten-year amortization. So this is a twenty-year amortization, which reduces our bond payments. So now the problem child, in terms of the fifth year, goes from three point some, three point six million dollars to a little bit less than a million dollars. So it dramatically changes the negative impact on bond balances, and we still have the flexibility of changing the way we spend our GMP money and the way we, how we deal with the public works issue, but it's a smaller problem. So the question is whether or not, it's really what we need input from the council, is, do you feel comfortable saving the interest rate by going to a ten-year bond? The savings is significant, it's a full one percent interest, so it's a significant amount of money. But what we trade off is cash in the bank, potentially if there's a really bad recession. That's the issue, is what does that worth? Is it worth going to pay the extra interest to go to a twenty-year amortization as opposed to ten, or do we go into this thinking, let's minimize our carrying costs, and if we have to deal with a really bad, really bad reduction in revenues, we'll just, we will deal with it? Any before? We have. Won't be the first rodeo, huh?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilor James?
Yeah, so I mean, sir, thank you. We had the worst-case, worst-case of worst-case scenario, Sky is falling, no parcel sales, all this stuff.
Correct.
And I remember sitting through this, you know, there was, your budget is so fiscally conservative, I mean, Woodland's about to break ground and do a ton of construction, none of that's realized in construction sales tax, and so, yeah, I look at it, and I think that, you know, and I mean, I think, you know, there's a lot of history, you guys alluded to it, oh eight, oh nine, Great Recession, and why you built it to these levels, but it just feels to me like this is a doomsday kind of scenario, and it's still not that bad. I think we, you know, march forward, march forward at the lower rate loan, or the bond, and keep this thing moving, so.
Other input?
Did you have input with Paige on this scenario?
We discussed these, Paige prepared all the different scenarios, sir. Did you ask me for my input?
Yeah.
I am, actually. I like the ten-year term as well, I would agree with the council, I think we have more than enough cash on hand, as the mayor said, if, even at the ten-year term, even if things did get really bad, then you slow down construction, you don't improve GMP six if you get to that point. It would have to be really bad for things like the current day to get to this point. And again, we are very fiscally conservative with our budget, there are certain things that we don't count on, and I think it's worth it to save the percentage on interest to do for the ten-year. And to be honest, I think it's good politics to show the citizens, too, that we're splitting this, we're doing half of the bond money, we're doing cash on hand, because at some point, with the kind of money we have cash on hand today, at some point, that becomes an issue, where people start saying, wait a minute, you've got too much cash sitting here.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea to split it in ten years.
Isn't this why we have the cash on hand for these scenarios that haven't happened, luckily?
It is, it is, but it's also a unique, it's a, we're a unique setting in which we have received a very, very significant amount of receipts that's all play money from the federal government. And, you know, we really, we really didn't ever go through a process in COVID where our budgets were killed, but we got all this extra money. And what we did was, we saved it. So, you know, so yeah, we have it, and now this is a good use for it, but it wasn't the reason why we got it. I mean, we've been fortunate, we've been fortunate that our budget held up through COVID, we still had construction going on, so we had construction sales tax. You know, we really didn't take any financial care.
Well, it doesn't change your fiscally conservative practice, which we've done for
Yeah, no, it doesn't.
Yeah, forever, yeah, so this is why we, somewhat why we do it, and yay, we got a bonus, you know?
If I may?
Yeah, please.
I don't mean to put you two guys in a spot, you're two most trusted advisors on this thing, where were you in the oh eight recession? Where are you in your careers? Were you dealing with numbers and these kind of problems? Did you see it? Did you get hurt? Get hurt by it? Did you? Do you understand what a recession is? Because there's a lot of people growing up in this world right now that haven't the slightest idea of what a recession is, and have been through, God, hell, we've been through in our old age.
I can't remember.
I can't either. About every ten years, you know, or last seven years, you know?
Yeah, I was helping manage my dad's concrete sand and gravel business.
Oh, you saw, you know, what a factor recession was?
Yep.
Okay.
Very tough.
Yes. Construction, anybody in the construction business saw massive influence of this recession of, yeah. Matthew, were you in the business then, or are you still in high school?
For all seriousness, I had just got my bachelor's degree and graduated, couldn't get a job, and I spent two years as being a waiter between bachelor's and graduate's school.
And you know what a recession is?
I do, bad time to graduate, yes.
Because we're living through, I mean, in the last recent times, the money has been flowing massively, and I am getting a lot of comments, and it's why I asked Paige about what she was seeing, what she's seen from the city's standpoint, with maybe a month or two or three of delays in revenues and reporting, it's not what I'm hearing on the streets today, you know, with revenues and stuff, so. Yeah, I have some concerns, you know, as we're going into questions, and we will dip with questions, just how deep we're gonna dip, and.
I mean, the government's forced to dip.
Because of inflation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
So, if we take everything out, and we look to spend, it's twenty-five, twenty-six, at eleven, fifteen million, or, I'm sorry, the money that we're talking about, what are we losing in what we're earning on the money in the bank right now? Is that on here anywhere? I can't see this on the screen in front of me. The interest that we're earning on that amount of money in the account seems to be more than what we'd be losing by taking the higher interest rate in one to the twenty-year, unless I'm misreading something.
We don't have, we don't have an arbitrage really totally calculated into these operating revenues, we have about five hundred thousand roughly in interest income, which we may be able to maintain, and if we've got more aggressive, we might be able to improve some. The, you can't use, we can't, we can't directly use bond proceeds to do the arbitrage, we can only pull down these bond proceeds for actual capital expenditure items, so some of that money sits in the bond, but what it does is it reduces our need to spend our other cash, and when we don't spend the other cash, then we have money that we can put into investments, you know, like T mills. So, whether we could get a little bit more aggressive than what we are now, I mean, the five hundred thousand is what, a little bit more than ten million that's invested?
We have about eighteen million.
Eighteen million invested, out of, what's our total cash balance?
It's roughly twenty, I'm estimating at the end of the year, it's going to be twenty-three million.
Twenty-three, so, we could get, you know, it may be a little bit more cash that we could put into, you know, put into that, but it's, you know, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna double it, and maybe we could get it up another, you know, from five hundred to six hundred.
Where's the excess above eighteen million?
It's in our checking and our money market account.
So, anything like thirty, yeah, three over three?
It's not much, but the reason I kept a decent balance in there is to cover the logical square payments, and then I draw down on the bond.
You can't get the money out of the pool quite quickly?
No, you can, I could put more into it.
The question, how quickly you can draw down on the bond?
Next day.
So it can be, so you don't need to keep that much probably in, you know, in non-productive assets?
Yeah, I would think that would be relatively slim, it would be your payroll and your operating expenses, and the request for funds that you get out of payment on the square, I presume those guys are billing, because, you know, for what they, where they anticipate they're gonna be in three or four weeks from now, so you're getting a way to look at it, and you're doing some kind of approvals of some sort, and then you got some kind of heads-up for, you know, two or three or four week notice before those payments are expected to be made.
I'll move, I'll move some money to you.
The money market, who's the money market with?
Both the checking and money market.
Okay, is there, I know, I mean, we went through this before, we're trying to figure out, get accounts, but money markets at, like, fidelity and Janus and whatever, are paying pretty, a little bit less than CDs, but you're getting up there pretty, pretty good. Is there a covenant program of some sort?
There's a whole, there's a whole process that we started, but I don't think we have followed through or completed, where we started talking with Morgan Stanley, because it has to go through, it can't just be, we get onto Edward Jones and open our account, those kind of accounts don't really fit your cities. But the larger houses like Morgan Stanley and others that are similar have programs that are government, that are for governments.
Right.
And, you know, those will pay, they'll have better returns.
I did email him a couple of weeks ago, told him as soon as we made the decision on the bond, that then we'd be ready to.
To make it, to take it a little further, yeah, so we started the conversation, just that, you know, right now, we're in a lot of uncertainty because of not knowing how we're, what we're gonna do with these GMPs, and how much of this cash we're gonna spend, and whatnot.
If I may make one more comment?
Please.
About eleven and a half million dollars, I would hope freely, and it would not go toward building a public works facility out there. It would seem to me, on the outside looking in, worst-case scenario is you spend fifty grand and build a fence across the front of that place with a sliding gate. We put two or three, several we have back here in the back, buildings out there, brand-new, sitting out there for another, now about a hundred and fifty grand or so, plus some utilities to hook them up, and then we spent another few hundred thousand dollars to build that three or four thousand foot metal work building that they want to sit back there behind it, kind of back out where nobody can see it, and maybe that thing could be kept tidily in the five hundred thousand range, maybe, if we can avoid a hundred thousand-plus dollars in engineering and architecture fees. And if you buy the pre-made prefabs, all the architecture and engineering is pulled to the price of that, it's some significantly reduced cost of what we pay in the metal building, they've got all-in-house engineers that will do all that, so that will all be built into that, and really, and building a wall, I know we're gonna be tempted to engineer the heck out of a six-foot fence, but I don't know that that's.
Build a wall to hide it?
Yeah, I don't know that that's absolutely essential, that we overly engineer a six-foot wall, but I would hope that we could get them immediately something that's far better than what they've got now, that will get us through the next five, six, seven years, that we can get this thing out here under control, and maybe out of our budget or producing revenues, and then we can look at the two over-the-top buildings that have been mentioned, the scout building and another public works.
And what you're saying is there would be a whole lot bigger than what is there today?
Yes, exactly.
Put students in there, kids in there.
Yeah, we've had some conversations about that, and I think I've come up with some concepts that would give us something that would work better and not be anywhere. Yes, you're gonna offer to build it for us, aren't you?
Oh, it's free, man, I'm here. Let's get it going.
It's gonna be a three hundred thousand dollar building if you can build it for us.
With his name.
No, what I wanted to mention is, what we did over at St. Peter's Church, for the school there, we moved in prefab units that we bought from the city, purely.
Right.
And then, and then we put a new facade on it, made it in stucco, and it had bare bit and all that, but if you get up on the top, you'll see a pitched roof, and it doesn't make any sense, but anyway, but that worked out really well for us.
Well, that, we've talked about doing that.
Yeah, it gave us a lot of flexibility, and they've been there, well, probably close to ten years, and we knew the.
We just renewed your use permit.
Yeah, I know.
I do, sure.
It was the fifteen or twenty?
Lots of use.
But anyway, it's, it's worked out really well for us, and I think for the city, because it doesn't detract from any of the architecture.
Yeah, we've talked about doing something like that in the front, and then putting up a, we can get a pre-engineered building for the back.
A butler building.
A butler building, for the back, but not build the whole building, literally just put up the roof and leave the sidewalls open, so now it's like a big awning to cover our equipment, and you can do, you can work out there most, you know, for the most times, and maybe as you go forward, then you enclose a smaller area that you can air-condition, so you have workers working on equipment, but doing it in stages, so that, you know, we're not going up three million dollars and clip. So I think there's, we'll come up with a solution to it.
You could take that metal building material, roll that into a facade in front of that.
All it is, we wouldn't, we wouldn't use.
We could all tie in and look together, it wouldn't be that much.
We wouldn't use any of the metal.
Any of the metal.
You gotta get rid of it.
That's the thing, it all matched, if you want.
Yeah, so, it's, so we'll come up with a plan before, you know, before we get to the problem. Any questions or input from the phone? The video conference.
I, again, I just think, you know, I did eighteen billion, five hundred thousand by eighteen billion, I got two point seven seven percent, and four, I'm trying to, in my head, what is the difference of cost that we take up, if we did the longer term and paid it off early if needed, or if we were able to, and make sure we need to get into a jam where we're so tight on funds, years four and five, further out, it sounds to me like you guys are more in line with the ten-year term versus the twenty.
I am divided, I could go either ten or twenty, you know, what I wanted to hear was the input from council, and try to figure out how the council, get a consensus from council on what everybody feels comfortable with. And I think the vice mayor's in a similar position. And I, I think the vice mayor's in a similar position.
I'm on the fence.
Yeah. It, you know, we, we could be knocked off the fence on the ten-year side or the twenty-year side, depending upon what council feels, feels about it.
He personally mitigates this. I would rather take the twenty-year term and pay it down early if, if we're able to get in a better position. You know, I'm not afraid of the, the, a little bit of extra, and we're still making money on the money that we keep in the bank, up until that time. So, I definitely, I, 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 I'm not as comfortable tightening everything into a ten-year term and locking it into a ten-year term, and then really tightening things up in just a couple of years if we have that worst-case scenario.
So, is there anyone else on the video conference besides Councilman Claire? I just wanna make sure everybody's had an opportunity to, you know, speak. Okay, anybody else here in the council chambers that wishes to put their input into the ten versus twenty-year?
So, let me ask this question, which may have to do with this or me not. So, we right now have no, I mean, we, we have nobody in the pipeline bidding on any of this.
Well, we're still working with one.
We're still working with one, one major developer. And, and how are we feeling about that?
You know, she's not, she's.
So, that's why we're here, that's why, that's one of the reasons why we're.
No, I mean, the, the, our, our situation with the, you know, whether we had somebody we're negotiating with or not, the, you know, the, we have a significant amount of money that needs to be spent to finish the infrastructure, to put it in state that if we don't sell it, or if we do, either way, it's gotta be finished. If we were to sell it, then for sure it's gotta get finished, 'cause they're gonna wanna build on it. If we don't sell it, we gotta finish it, 'cause we wanna sell it.
So, this is to finish it till it's ready?
Right. So, now, we don't have the cash, we don't have enough cash not to, not to borrow something else far. If we don't do the bond, then we can't, we can't really finish the square to the point we need to finish it. So, it's just a question of, how much do you borrow? When I, and, you know, we looked at a ver, a variety of scenarios from twenty-three down to the ten. And then, you know, and eleven point five seems to be a good number. Then the question is just how quickly do we pay on it?
Which would make a difference as to how quickly we sell it, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, everything changes. If you sell a bunch of it, then obviously that gives us some more cash to be paying on bonds and, you know, whatever.
Would the plan be to draw the bond down, spend that money first on this project, and then dip into savings, or vice versa?
It would make most sense to draw the bond money down first.
Yes.
And keep the savings invested.
At the rates.
At the rates we can get today.
We can keep those rates up.
Yeah, right. That would be the most, financially, I think, the best path.
Right.
'Cause you're paying for the, you're paying for this bond money anyway.
And there's a time limit. I don't know what it is off-hand, but you have to use the bond.
Yeah. And we could only, like, GMP, the GMP five, it's nine point, it says nine point two million. I don't know if that's the number that's in GMP five or not. It is, isn't it?
Yes.
So, you got nine point two million that we know we're gonna use between now and January. So, that would, and if it's eleven million dollar bond, eleven point five million dollar bond, you've, you've used, it'll get used up between now and January.
And the interest rates we're looking at, I think I saw a note somewhere that said those are inclusive of all the bond fees, the underwriting fees, everything else, correct?
There's a column that has it.
Yeah, there's a.
Oh, the all true, the all-in true movies costs?
Right.
All the insurance costs.
Yeah.
So, the interest rate would be less than that. That includes all the underwriting fees, bond fees, all the.
All the stuff that gets put in there.
All the waiting, all the people that are in the process, bond attorneys, everything else.
I personally think I'm going along with Ron. I think that makes sense that we have, let's, let's have a better cash situation over the, over the twenty years instead of trying to pay it down too fast. We don't know what's gonna happen. But the other side of it is, we can always pay it down if we do sell the property.
You have limited abilities to do that. There probably are, probably are dates, like anniversary dates where we can make prepayments. Usually that's what is in the, the restrictions. So, it's not, it's not super easy to pay it off, but it, it's possible.
The fact that you and the vice mayor both aren't directly one way or the other tells me that both ways are feasible in both of your minds.
Correct.
I, I just, I continue to, I continue to sit back, and I mean, like I said, I know I've got about a hundred days under my belt on council here, but I, I sit back.
So, who has your wisdom?
I, I just, I look at this and I just.
Unbiased wisdom now.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I mean, it's, it's so paramount that, that this continues to move forward. The city center moves forward. And, like I said, the, the, the amount of risk aversion that's built into everything. I mean, we are, we are assuming kind of these doomsday scenarios of this, this, and listen, three of you sat on here and went through this, and let's see, I was, I just got on.
To be fair, it was, what we went through was no, was nowhere near as bad as the worst-case projections that she's put together on. They, they're really bad.
Well, we're bigger now.
They were really bad back in the late, though.
Yeah, it did, but not, I mean, our revenues did not go down anywhere near what we're assuming is.
We, we cut all road maintenance, all capital through the projects. We quit, we didn't seed the grass, we didn't, didn't water the grass.
That was the biggest thing we got through.
Paperclips.
But like I said, I just, I just sit back and listen, and I hear all these different levers, and all these, you know, the, so many things that, I, I just, it feels to me like this ten-year thing is, why, why are we gonna, why are we gonna punt this thing to twenty when there's, there's just, for a doomsday scenario, like, let's, let's go forward with this, and let's, let's get our people, and let's continue building the city center. And we have this public works building that, you know, what, three million, and maybe it's five hundred thousand, maybe we, you know, this, that. It seems like you guys have already figured out all these scenarios. I just.
To be fair, the, if, if the main concern is to make sure that we're able to finish Litchfield Square, then the safer path to do that is twen, is the twenty-year. Because it's very unlikely that we would need to cut GMP six. We might have to cut the clock tower out or the water feature, but, you know, we would pretty much be able to finish ninety percent or pl, ninety percent plus, even saving money to make sure we eliminated that negative if, if it got to the worst case. So, you know, if the concern is making sure that we get that done, then the safer way to do that is a twenty-year.
But GMP five, and, on this proposal, doesn't get finished till?
January.
This, January twenty-four.
January.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. So, it's, it's, it's what we, and, and you're not gonna see any significant recession until January twenty-four.
Right.
I mean, it, it's gonna hap, if it happens, you know, it's gonna be sometime next year.
After the election. After the election.
You know, it's, it's all, it's gonna be about what happens if the Federal Reserve keeps, keeps raising interest rates, then bank balance sheets, I mean, you can't even calculate the amount of, amount these banks are underwater because of all the loans they've made. It's not just that they have borrowed money from the T-bills, and those T-bills are almost worthless. It's all the loans that they've made, all the home loans, all the mortgages that are out there. They're all underwater because of the, the interest rates. Well, in a big way.
Like two thousand and eight.
Significant. We're talking a trillion-plus dollars of lost market value because of the interest rate rises that, after already. So, if that's gonna have to be very careful, I mean, they could put us in a really bad situation.
They say they're just gonna make extra money. That's what I heard last week. They're gonna print extra money.
And they will, I mean, they will print money if they have to, but that's what's, that's here to start with.
I mean, you're?
Yeah, please.
Paige, you're the number cruncher on here. Um, as I look at the, the ten-year two point eight percent and the twenty-year three point eight percent, a one percent difference on eleven and a half million dollars in the first year is.
About a hundred grand.
It's over a hundred grand, yeah. Now, if we pay that off, we do the twenty-year, and we pay it off at ten, how much extra will we have spent? And how much of that is offset by money in the bank? I'm, I'm, I'm drawing, I'm drawing a blank and trying to calculate this number.
You're not gonna do it in your head. You have to fill out a spreadsheet to figure that out.
Is there, is there, we're talking probably, I'm guessing, five hundred, eight hundred thousand, maybe? But I need to do a, some kind of interest of money in the bank calculation also in and on that? So, maybe there's, it's a five hundred dollar, a thousand dollar difference, maybe?
I'd have to fill in the spreadsheet. I would give.
I mean, okay, you got a lot of assumptions to make, but, you know, you could, if, if you're, if you assume that you can somehow pay it off in ten, which we have to see how the, what the terms of bonds actually come back, with how they come back. But if you assume that you, you could pay it off much more quickly, then you, you know, you're probably looking at half a million, four hundred thousand, half a million dollars. But that's spread out again over ten years, so you're looking at, you know, an average cost per year of less than a hundred thousand dollars.
So, I, I have a question similar to Justin's, and that is, you know, I don't know for how many years now I've said, I hope in my lifetime. This is what I've done, right? So, in moving forward, which one of these moves us forward faster?
It's all about if there's a recession. If there's a recession, there's a higher likelihood that we would have to slow down the GMP six, seven. You know, and that's finishing the, it's finishing the north half of the park, it's finishing the, the playground. It's, it's really a lot of amenities.
Right.
That would have to be slowed down. So.
Which is fine, 'cause then we have, we still, we have commercial in there that's paying us out. It's just the features that are.
This does everything except the north half of the park, correct?
Cor, correct. And, and there's other, so there's other, there's other things with, some of the street, like, some of the street improvements are not all completed. There's a ver, there's various things that, that are, that are also not in, in this GMP five.
But I thought six.
Like the street, the street that comes out, Malouma's, it comes out from, you know, south of Fairway. I don't think that's finished.
It's not the five, but that's in six.
Six, correct.
And this money that will take us through six?
This, this money will, as long as we don't have to.
Stop.
Stop.
Right.
You know, because we get so much negative, we have such a negative amount of cash.
Yeah.
We should be able to, it's certainly a finish all of five, and, you know, it should get most of six.
Plus, plus our cash is done in the five also, you know, to get, to get us through six. And the only thing left, you keep talking about seven or eight, like, and that, that's new numbers to me.
It's because what we're doing is we're splitting these GMPs up to try to move the cash flow out.
Yeah.
So, five is not what five used to be. You know, originally, before we started saying, well, maybe we will do a bond, five was actually like, it was like four and a half, four and three-quarters, it was pieces, to try to smooth out the cash flow requirements.
But we've got everything lined up. We just got it, is on, except the north half of the park, which is the playground, the water feature, and all are part of the amphitheater.
It's all of the amphitheater.
Amphitheater's not in GMP six.
It's all in.
It's not in six?
Amphitheater's not in GMP six.
So, is GMP six gonna put us in the irrigation system on the south half of the park? On the north half of the park, we're gonna water it with hoses and tractors?
G, GMP six, they're gonna finish everything, except for the amphitheater and the.
Not building the amphitheater, but it's putting in like the depressed area.
It's doing the dirt. Yeah. So, the dirt, the grading will be done in with it?
Correct. And, and the thought for GMP six is, again, it, normally, we were gonna do everything, including the amphitheater. But then the amphitheater has gotten more complicated, and it's become a government project quite, quite.
By the door, right?
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, it's, it's pretty cool, but it's. So, GMP six has gotten, that's why there's seven, eight, and nine. I mean, it's, some of these things that are, that are wish, on the wish list, you know, need to be thought of as a little further out.
Can we get that printed out, or is it seven, eight, and nine?
You can have Z, GMP six, Woody's actually starting to work on that now.
That's right.
So, you know, we'll have a better idea of what, you know, what the staging of it is, what pieces of it are, once Woody meets with Aiken Gardner and they're trying to figure out what makes sense.
When, when do we anticipate seeing? To approve GMP six?
Yeah.
I would say, I would say later this summer to approve GMP six.
Later this summer. Yeah, you, we'd have a better idea of what's in GMP six probably in a month.
That's what I'm looking at.
A month to six weeks.
Give me a list, I guess.
And these bonds, when, when would this go to sell? Immediately.
Well, council approved them at the May meeting. And then we, basically, we'd give Mark, great, Mark is our bond agent. We would give him a green line on the best day to sell the bonds, 'cause as you know, of course, they're up in a downing price.
The, the idea is we wanna go and get them go, doing their work right now, because interest rates are not, you know, they're not gonna go down in the next six weeks. So, the quicker we can get this done, the, the better situation's gonna be in the market.
So, we should go back to the question of your ten-year or twenty-year?
Correct.
So, you gotta flip, flip a coin, or? I mean, it seems like we're all gonna be all kind of.
We're betting on whether there'll be a recession or not.
Right.
Well, the, it even, the, is it gonna be a minor recession, is it gonna be a major recession?
So, we're, but we're just like the rest of the country in this quarter, so.
The worst-case scenario is a major recession.
Major.
So, are you starting to follow one side of the fence or the other yet, listening to this?
I, you know, I'm gonna tell you that, that I, I agree with what Councilman James said, that we need to, we need to finish this, what we started on Litchfield Square. It's not an option.
No, it's not an option. I agree.
So, the safest path to do that is a tw, is twenty years.
I heard that out of Councilman Claire, the twenty, and I think I heard the ten out of you, maybe the, John, I think it was like the twenty. I think I'm kinda leaning, maybe we can retake the four hundred thousand gamble, whatever it is.
And we're trying to minimize it through arbitrage.
Yes.
All right. Anybody, anybody object to the consensus? All right, so you go forth with the bond council, get it, you know, get them to working on it, uh, bring it back to us today so we can vote on it, and make sure that they understand one of the questions that we're gonna wanna have, have answered is, what are the, what are the possibilities for repayment early if we're able to do that?
On a twenty-year term.
Well, we wanna stay with the twenty-year term, but, you know, can we, you know, can, are there gonna be window dates where we could go in on a, you know, after eight years, we can go in and pay it off, or after fifteen years?
Or the winter, to move it all for the winter.
Yeah.
Right. It seemed like we built that in the last time that we talked about this, but.
Probably never pays them off early, but.
We'll, we'll feel better about ourselves. All right, anything else we need to cover?
If Paige can get the other five million stuck someplace earning a bunch of money, that's significant per month, I think. We can get that from, oh, it's point one percent, we're getting to up to three and a half or so.
We're gonna end up spending some time with, with, with Morgan Stanley too, because they'll give us assistance in planning, you know, planning the cash, you know, our cash needs and keeping it in the right mix of, of spots where we're gonna earn money and still.
Morgan Stanley will do that?
Oh, yeah.
They have a government, government division?
Yeah, they do. So, we'll finish that, we'll, we'll finish that process. Do you have a question, please?
In the meantime, though, we take the five million, dump it in the pool.
Correct.
It's not a full five million, 'cause that's the projected ending balance, so that's all of our revenues. So, it's gonna be more than three.
Okay. That's keeping you back a million or so for ongoing expenses, payroll. No, that buys the new building down here for public works.
If not, is there a motion to adjourn this work stuff?
Can I ask complete budget questions here?
Sure.
Just if our FAS is coming back to the budget. So, again, we're, we're okay to plan for ten percent. We, we can adjust it. We're at seven and three, six and four, but ten overall is the question, 'cause Paige has to prepare the tentative budget, and that's what makes sure that we're good to move forward with that.
Particularly in the tentative budget, yes, use ten, because the tentative budget, we're not bound to it.
We can always cut that.
It's a, it's a, it's a cap.
Yes, sir.
So, use the ten in that cap, but then understand that we're gonna wanna, we're gonna wanna talk through exactly what is a col, what should the cola amount be?
What's the division?
Yeah, and then how much, you know, what do we wanna do with this merit part of it?
Okay.
And I, it, for me, it's much more palatable to talk about higher percentage of merit as opposed to cola.
I agree.
Are you talking seven and three, or?
Six and four, maybe. I don't know, I don't, let's see what the numbers are. You know, what's a year, what's a year-over-year number on a reasonable, you know, CPI measure?
It's a better performance incentive.
Huh?
I said it's a better performance incentive, have higher merit.
Well, I think it does, I think it is, yeah.
It doesn't increase the range, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Ron, you can go back to whatever it is you're doing in Texas.
Did you take?
I did.
Kerry, go figure that out.